Property owners are going to have to kick it out.
Good evening. I would like to you to call the special meeting of the Board of Finance to order for Wednesday, December 5th, 2018. We have one item on the agenda this evening. It is to discuss and take possible action on resolution, on a resolution recommending a special appropriation of $3.1 million for additional costs of the 2017 Mulberry Point Water Main Extension Project. We all have the project resolution in front of us. Before I read this, I wanted to provide as brief as possible an overview of where we I felt it was appropriate largely because I needed to brush myself up on where things stood with the project, so I figured if I had to do it, the rest of the board might need a little bit of a refresher as well.
Mr. Chairman, just, I'm going to recuse myself from participation in the discussion because I represent some folks.
That's fine.
Who own land on which the main will run.
Okay, okay.
So I'm going to recuse myself this time.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
So I will, like I said, I will read the resolution after I provide the brief history, just so I can ask for a motion for discussion in a second. The history to this is ultimately that there was a water main extension project for 145 residents at Mulberry Point, Tuttles Point, and Long Cove. This project was approved by referendum in May of 2017. It was a townwide referendum and the amount at that time was $3.4 million. I should add that I am going to go through this fairly briefly. There's going to be some detail, I'm going to request our first selectman and finance director to come up and answer any questions and provide further detail. But again, I wanted to pretty much set the stage for tonight's discussion. On this referendum, the, it was approved by about an eight to one margin, so it was an overwhelming approval. Eighty-three percent of the residents that are in this area of the 145 residents committed to the project, which was well over the necessary commitment that was required by the Connecticut Water Authority, Connecticut Water Company, or CWC. All the expenses would be paid by the residents located in the service area of Mulberry Point, Tuttles Point, and Long Cove, including all of the initial soft costs. In January of 2018, the town signed an agreement with CWC, which basically formalized a commitment made by that entity, which also resulted in approximately a $1.5 million commitment. And the remaining cost of that $3.4 million for the project would be borne by the residents in the service area. A design and construction team was hired in early summer and in early fall bids came back for the construction with a fairly wide range of estimates. These ranged anywhere from about $4 million to $7 million. Largely because of this range, it was decided by the Board of Selectmen and our town to go back out to bid, which we had the option to do, and try to get closer, better estimates, ranges, maybe more, some more detailed numbers. And on November 9th, four bidders came forward with bids that ranged from $4.9 million to $5.8 million, which was a much better range of bids, and they were actually in line with the second high bidder of the first go-around of the bids. I believe, and I might be correct on this, I believe the first bidder, the initial time around, was not, I think they were basically eliminated from the initial bid?
They withdrew.
Was, I'm sorry?
They withdrew.
They withdrew, okay. I knew that the first bidder, the low bidder, was not considered for a certain reason, that was why, they withdrew. So this was felt to be a much more accurate estimate. So, just in some additional information, with the help of our state representative, Sean Scanlon, there's some bonded money from the state expected of about $450,000. And we do have the opportunity, as we're going to hear shortly, that we could go back for more money from, from bond, from the state. So the $3.4 million was approved, and tonight, based on the second set of bid estimates from the construction drawings that were developed by the engineering and construction management team over the summer, there's a special appropriation that has been recommended for us to move to town meeting for an additional $3.1 million for this water main project. At this time, what I'm going to do is read the motion, I will put that in form, I will read the resolution for, to be put in the form of a motion, and second, and then we will have our first selectman, finance director, come up and answer, or present further detail on the project as needed. So this resolution recommending a special appropriation of $3,100, $100,000, $3,100,000 for additional costs of the 2017 Mulberry Point Water Main Extension Project. It is resolved that A pursuant to Section 66 of the Town Charter, the Board of Finance recommends a special appropriation of $3,100,000 to pay for the additional costs of the 2017 Mulberry Point Water Main Extension Project, also just called the project from here on out, and B, the town shall finance the special appropriation by advancing funds from available funds of the town. The town appropriation for the project is thereby increased to $6,543,000, and the appropriation may be expended for design, construction, acquisition and installation costs, engineering fees, materials, equipment, surveying and testing costs, legal fees, other consultant fees, financing costs, interest expense and temporary borrowings, and other costs related to the project. The appropriation shall include any federal, state, or other grants in aid received for the project. The Board of Selectmen may reduce or modify the scope of the project, and the entire appropriation may be expended on the project as so reduced or modified. The town anticipates levying assessments against properties located in Long Cove, Mulberry Point, and Tuttles Point, which is anticipated to include Lower Road, Daniel Avenue, Mulberry Point Road, Tuttles Point Road, Faulkner Drive, Spring Street, Meriden Street, Highland Street, White Top Lane, Rock Lane, Sagamore Street, Marshall Avenue, Charles Street, Decatur Avenue, Ruth Lane, and Brown Street, benefited by the project in an amount sufficient to defray the net cost of the project in accordance with Chapter 264 of the Town Code and Section 7-137(c) of the Connecticut General Statutes. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Chair, move. Second.
Okay. Ford, we have a motion and a second for discussion purposes, and at this point, Mr. Howe and Ms. Melfi, if you'd like to come up and provide further detail as necessary for this particular discussion for the resolution.
Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you did a nice job summarizing. We have a couple of documents I want to share with you, first of which are the results of the two bids that went out. The first one was in the June-July timeframe, and I, while we're passing these out, we want just to talk a little bit about that, that first bid process. There, as you'll see on the documents, there was a widespread, unusually widespread between the low bidder and the high bidder, and particularly between the low bidder and the next highest bidder, which is a difference of about $2 million on a $3 million project, is a pretty wide divergence. We were prepared to move forward with the low bidder, and in finals discussion with them, we made the decision we were going to award the letter, the contract to them. However, during those discussions, the principal for that company indicated that he may be short on his bid, indicating that he was in, probably far lower than he could afford to do it. So he got back to us, I think a couple of days later, two days later, and officially withdrew. One question that comes to mind immediately is, why don't we call the bid bond? We could have done that. Bid bond was 10% of the contract, roughly $3 million contract, $300,000 bid bond. But you can only call the bid bond if you elect to move to the next highest bidder. That's the process. So we weighed the options, including a protected legal entanglement with them relative to calling the bid bond, and the fact that there was such a wide divergence within the four bids, as well as the divergence from the original estimates, which were put together in 2016. Just as a little bit of background, we did have an engineering firm work with us on those original estimates. We had three quotes from, they were quotes, they weren't full formal proposals, and it was vetted by the water company themselves as reasonable cost, et cetera. Obviously, that did not materialize. So we, on the advice of council, our construction council, the Connecticut Water Company, and our engineering firm we're currently using, we decided to go back out to bid, hoping that the climate would be a little bit more attractive. We also changed a couple of parameters. We refined the, you know, the traffic signal requirements, you know, having guards, those kind of things, because there were some, in one of the quotes, the original quotes, they had $600,000 in terms of flagmen and, and guards, which is, we could hire two people for the project at $50,000 a year. So something was, something was wrong. Additionally, we became aware that that area is an ecologically sensitive area, or historically sensitive area. There is the potential that there may be Native American burial grounds in the area, so we were required to, to bring onboard a surveyor who, and actually happens to be a Guilford resident who does this kind of archaeological surveying work. So nonetheless, the decision's made to go back out to bid. And, you know, just for a minute, let me, let me back off for a quick second. Mary Jane and I had a very interesting week, the week that the low bidder pulled out. On Wednesday, we received a commitment from the governor's office at the time that we would be receiving $1.255 million in state bond proceeds for this project. They felt that this has risen to the level of a, a public health crisis, and were prepared to commit to $1.255, which was a little bit more than the difference between the original estimates for the project and the low bidder. So we would have, we would have been more than whole. That was on a Wednesday. On Friday, we received the, the notice that they pulled, the low bidder pulled out, so now we're back to the drawing board. So we re-engage the, as I said, we re-engage our engineering firm, revise the bid documents, refine them a little bit. We also, I think, provided equipment depots in various properties adjacent to the project, so the contractors wouldn't have to, you know, schlepped their equipment back and forth in time, et cetera.
Close proximity staging.
Close proximity for staging, you're absolutely right. So you'll see the, the other bids came in, and we, and they're tighter, they're bunched closer together, a little more realistic, and we worked with our engineering firm and the water company to work through the bids, and we're comfortable with the low bidder. One of the challenges we have here, which is why we're, we're moving as quickly as we can on this, the commitment we have from the Connecticut Water Company for $3.4 million in revolving loan funds, we need to, we need to commit to that before the end of the year, Dennis, is that, that the timeline you're saying right now?
If you want to see, if you want to see.
Give our application.
Application. We have, we have, the, the money has been allocated to us, and the, the governor's last bond issuance will include the $230 million for clean water projects. Guilford's allotment is one of those. So after, after we realized that we'd have to go back out to bid, in all fairness to the governor's office, we went back and said, we don't have a viable contractor, we don't have a, we don't have a contract in place, therefore, you know, we just want you to know that, that that money is not necessarily the, the final number. They, the governor's office determined that they were still committed to the project, and they gave us $450,000 with the invitation to come back for more at a later point. So we will be going back to them at, at some point in the future. More than likely, we'll be with a new administration, because we still don't have a contract signed, even though there is a bond issuance going out on, I think it's December 14th or something, I think December 14th, that there's another round of bonding, but we are not part of that. So we will be going back out. We also have an 18-month window within which we can look for federal and additional state money to offset the cost. As Mike said, in the, in the reading of the, the resolution, the cost for this additional $3.1 million will be borne by the 145 property owners upon the route, where the, where it goes through. And this is consistent with the, the original projections and the original conditions when this was approved at referendum. The difference is, we don't have to go to referendum on this, because we are not increasing the bonding authorization. We are keeping it at the 3.4, 3.443, and it's somewhat of a misnomer, it's not bonding, it's a loan. This is not really bonding, but the way it was worded, the way we structured this the first time around, it had to go to referendum. This one does not. This is merely an additional appropriation. The cost will be offset by the assessments and/or any other revenue sources we can identify between now and then. So we are, we are here, the Board of Selectmen unanimously passed this on Monday. It will go from your board, assuming it's voted out positively, to a town meeting on the 13th of December, 7:30 here at the, the community center, and it can be determined and voted in at town meeting. What am I missing?
I, the only thing is that this is an up-to number, you know, we have contingencies in place in, in these numbers, so we're not looking to, we're hopefully looking for this number to be less when in our final analysis with costs. So the assessments will not be put in place until the contract is complete, the construction is complete, so that we are all-inclusive with those costs, but we're, we're hoping not to even need all of this $3.1 million, but we have put that contingency in place.
One thing I do want to mention, that through, through the past, what, almost 18 months now, the number of residents who have committed to signing up for water has gone from, was it 82 or 83% to, 83% to 93% today? So additional folks have determined that this is something that they, they need to do. We have been forthcoming with representatives from the neighborhoods. Mike Mizell and Sue Robbins are here. Melissa Dayton will be in my office a little later this week with, representing her constituency, but we have kept them apprised. We didn't have to keep them apprised, they've been, they've been bird dogging this right from, right, right from.
For a long time.
You're right, you're absolutely right. So I just wanted, I just wanted to make that point, that it is, it is, it has become substantially, they're substantially above the threshold that the Connecticut Water Company was looking for. I also, just another tack that we're taking, Pam Millman and I are meeting on Monday with representatives of the Connecticut Water Company to see whether or not they will increase their contribution to us. As I say, I think we all know, the folks who will wind up winning beyond our residents getting potable water will be the water company in the end, in the end result. We had, we have a firm contractual number of $1.5 million for them, and we're going to see whether or not we can go north with that number as well. So you put that together with some of the, the opportunities for state bonding money and potential federal money over the next 18 months, we should be, we hopefully will be able to offset those, those increases to make it easier on the residents. I want to, I just passed out a comparison, a budgetary comparison. As you see, about halfway down, the additional appropriation is $3.1 million. But what is, what is next, what is most, more important, just for safeguards for this board, the next number down, net to be recovered through assessments, and again, this is a somewhat aggressive number, it's a little bit inflated, because we've built in a contingency beyond which the state would allow, DPH allows for a 5% contingency on a project of this nature, we have raised the contingency to 13% total, as you'll see in the, the second bucket, on your way down the column. But the net to be recovered through assessment is $4.1 or $4.2 million. Like just mentioned a minute ago, we have the authorization to borrow up to 3.443. So that roughly leaves about $800,000. And as you can see, the $800,000 that we anticipated getting from the, from state bonding would have covered that cost and kept us in underneath that threshold.
And we're going back.
And we're going back, so.
But they just approved the $4.50?
They approved the $4.50, it's in the bank, we have that coming.
Okay.
Yeah, so. We have Norv Church here, who I think you all remember from the first time we went through that, so if there are some questions around the legal requirements or the legal capabilities we have with what we have done for the ordinance and the assessments, et cetera, Norv would be happy to answer any questions.
Dennis is here.
And Dennis is here also. If anyone knows anything about this project, he's been living it for 17 or 20 years, I think?
Many.
Almost, almost as long as Sue Robbins has been living it.
He's always been.
So. Did I miss anything?
I'll answer questions.
Go ahead, Kent.
So first, when you, just to clarify, you made a comment that it was required by the CWC, the requirement for a certain threshold was in order to get the funding that they're catching into the thing, so we don't need their requirement to do this, but they, they needed a certain percentage of households.
They had a threshold, and we, and the residents went well past that threshold.
So the original appropriation was, we thought the original budget was 3.4, of which the homeowners were going to pay 1.9-ish.
1.7.
It says 1.7 here. So the homeowners are basically, if we hit the high end, are going to be paying one and a half times more than what they originally anticipated. The, the 1.2 million grant that you just referred to from the state that was in the budget, we've gotten 400 of that, that's against that 1.2 million potential total?
1.255, against that total.
Okay.
But it's a good point, our request is higher than the 1.255. We're going back in, asking for substantially more than that.
But this number here only reflects 860 of the potential 1.255.
No, no.
Is there another piece I'm missing here?
The 410 is a clean water subsidy that we're receiving from the Clean Water Fund, that's just a grant directly from the Clean Water Fund. The state grant of 450 is part of the 1.255.
So there's still another 800 that's not in here that we could get?
Correct, exactly.
The homeowners wouldn't have to.
That's potential, that's guaranteed.
Potential, yes, yes.
Right, so this is a worst case.
These are true, these are true dollars that we are confident we will be receiving.
So my next question is, since we're not going to referendum, and the homeowners, in theory, are paying the full tab on this, you're basically have opened the door for us using special funds money, or money's wherever we can get them, at some point to potentially fund this project, which, as you said yourself, would be in essence a loan to them. So, given where rates are now, for $3 million, at 2%, that's $5,000 per month, that is basically opportunity cost to whatever fund that money is coming out of. Do we anticipate billing, if we use those funds, are we, so that's, that's lost revenue to the town?
That's lost, that's right.
Okay.
That's the town's investment, basically.
Okay, okay.
So I have a question, since the residents will, that live in the area and that are going to be assessed, will actually be borne with the cost. Are they aware that the cost potentially could raise now from $13,000 assessment over 20 years to maybe a $28, $30,000 assessment?
Yes, we've shared it with, we've, we have shared it with the associations.
And is there any feedback, you know, obviously there was an overwhelming approval for the project, at least that's not in doubt, but.
Yeah, the feedback is.
Would people start to have second thoughts now?
Yeah, the, the feedback is primarily, go get that state and federal money. However, they have also all volunteered to do what they can to scour and to work with our federal representatives, and as well as our state representatives. And by the way, credit needs to be given to Sean Scanlon, who secured the original commitment of $1.255 million from the governor's office. And we anticipate, we anticipate being able to get more money from, from the state at this point, based on the, the determination that this is a public health crisis to some degree.
The fact that they were willing to commit the 450 before we even had a contract is very telling.
Now, maybe this is dated, I think I'm just reading from an old article, but I, I think one of the finance vehicles was going to be the drinking water revolving funds?
That's the law.
That's the law.
And that's the very low interest loans for the state.
Two percent.
So, does it affect our financing now that we want additional money, or can we still go to that source?
No, we're not, we have a max of $3.44, $3 million.
Okay, I think you mentioned that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
So now, the, the extra money would have to be from general bond issue from the town?
If, if it exceeds 3.4, yes, we would have to assess the, the individual property owners.
Do you think maybe it would be prudent to maybe have the property owners again voice their approval?
Yeah, they will have an opportunity next Wednesday night at the town meeting. That's the process. My doors open, I've got, I'm taking meetings right up until, till that point, I have several of them scheduled, as you can well imagine. Getting pretty familiar with telling this story.
So maybe it would be in our interest to wait to hear from the residents?
We have to move this to town meeting. That's what our action has to be.
The town meeting is where we're going to hear from the residents.
We have to go to a town meeting.
We're, we're just, it, this is really no different in process than the budget.
Okay, so we're not approving in a vacuum before we hear from the residents?
That's right. We're giving, we're giving the residents a right at the town meeting to.
You're, you're giving the residents the opportunity to speak and vote.
Right.
Okay, that was one of my concerns.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the resolution, it mentions acquisition. Can you explain acquisition of what? The wording is, total appropriation for the project is thereby increased to $6,543,000, and the appropriation may be expended for design, construction, acquisition, and installation costs, and then just materials, equipment, all that.
I do not have a specific reference to that, Norv, would you?
Acquisition would be easements.
That's what I wondered, is there a property that we have to acquire to do this?
Everything's acquired.
Everything is already acquired?
Correct.
So this is just a cover, a resolution, can you cover your?
Standard bond is standard resolution language.
Standard bond resolution language, yeah.
Standard language for a construction project.
Yeah.
I also have a process question, Mr. Chairman, or the first selectman maybe can answer. You talk about the Board of Selectmen being able to reduce or modify the scope of the project and the entire, entire appropriation. Doesn't the appropriation a responsibility of this board, not the Board of Selectmen?
No, the management of those funds is the Board of Selectmen. Once you approve them.
It's up to.
It's up to the Board of Selectmen to, to spend them.
Because it's up to the 3.1.
Up to, up to the maximum of 3.1 addition.
It's the same language as in all of our bonding appropriations for all of our bonds. Once it's approved through this board, the selectmen have the right to move the money, same thing as, as here.
So if they went over, they'd have to come back?
If we went over, we'd have to come back, which is.
Okay, that, I guess that, that's what I'm trying to get at, all right.
Can, can I ask a worst-case scenario question?
Sure.
So let's say we can't get any more state or federal money. Are the residents okay with this increase?
That's, that'll be determined on, on Wednesday night. Obviously, some of them are not, some of them are not going to be able to afford this, there's not much question, or, or they will ill be able to afford it. The question is, what is the value of potable drinking water? The fact that 93% of the residents in that area who are affected by this have committed to moving forward, that I think, for some, price is not an object, for some, it will be a challenge.
And for some it is. And what is the town's recourse if they can't afford it? Do, does the town lean the properties?
Um, yeah, it would.
Till they sell it, and then we coop the law.
Correct. How it'll work for us to get the assessment back, once, once it's all done and we determine the amount is $20,000, each household will receive a bill from the town of Guilford for that amount. There's two choices, they either pay the bill, and we're done, we pay the Clean Water Fund, we're good, or they choose to pay it over time, and at that point, the 2% interest is now applied to their amount, and they have the option of paying it over time, because that's how we would be paying it back. Just like you pay your, if you don't pay your tax bill, we will eventually lean your home, the same thing would happen here. Am I correct, Norv?
And is it going to be added to their tax bill, the special appropriation, if they opt to go over time?
We anticipate having a separate billing specifically for that. Possibly even at a different time period, but, you know, those things are yet to be hammered out, but those are our.
And they know all of this already? The residents know all of it?
Residents know that they will be getting tax bills for this, that went, that was fully disclosed back in 2017.
But they know like the new, potential new cost?
Some do.
Okay.
We've shared it, we've shared it with Mike and Sue, in fact, a document very similar to this we shared with them last week, so.
My only question, and this maybe is, is more for Dennis, I don't, I don't know, but obviously there's a big differential, and, and having worked in the industry for a while, I know that, you know, prices inflate, things happen in the, in. happen in the process of conceptual design and engineering, and then the increase. And I'm just wondering, what were the driving, what were the driving factors that it went? Because it was vetted out. There's no question that this estimate was vetted out very well by very professional and knowledgeable sources, and it went up as much as it did. I'm wondering what, what?
Drove it, what drove the cost?
What drove, what major, were there three major factors? Was it, just curious what that was?
There were a couple. I think we underestimated the reaction of the bidders related to the amount of ledge that is up in that area, and how hard it was going to be to extricate the ledge, and also to get rid of the materials, because that is a cost borne by the contractor as well. The proximity, that working in tight areas doesn't give you the opportunity to, you know, afford economies of scale to do large stretches, a lot of shutdowns and, you know, startups and shutdowns. Dennis, what else would?
Well, as the design plan proceeded, there are more costs that were determined to be added on. For instance, they determined they had to elevate a pipe across the Indian Co., Daniel Avenue Road. That wasn't predicted initially, and elevating a pipe with separate foundations added cost to the project. They discovered that on Toto's Point Road, the road is underlaid by a corduroy material of logs. We didn't know about that, so they have to work through that. That costs extra money. There was a Army Corps of Engineers got involved with the project, intact on additional engineering studies. We've had, you know, five amendments on the engineering study because of a vernal pool that was discovered. They needed to get shovel permits from DEP for general permits, for inland wetland crossings. You know, there are a lot of costs, a lot of engineering costs for that. Then there was also additional soil testing that was done through the fissure easement, which revealed that there was a lot more ledge rock than they had originally predicted. And so ledge rock removal disposal costs added on to the total project. And as Matt pointed out, it's a small area to maneuver around. Some of the streets are only nine feet wide, so it's a cost factor of additional time to do the project. So, you know, those are pretty much the driving forces. I think the prices of materials, iron, steel, had gone up because of the tariffs, you know.
What is the timeline for the project?
It's 18 months, unless we have no bad winters, but it's, seems that we can do it in 18 months.
Is it my understanding, originally, it was 12 months, and it went to 18 to allow for some contingency on time based on the approvals that were needed? I mean, it was a smart move, I think, to add time to it. I'm sure the residents don't want to hear add a time, but I think it's, rather than try to rush through it in 12 months and have issues.
Well, there were some construction restrictions. For instance, you can't do blasting or rock removal when the, when certain snowy egrids are breeding. You can't cross a vernal pool when turtles are laying eggs. So you have to stay away from certain areas. So that's added a bit more time to it, you know.
Right. It makes sense, and I wanted to ask the question because I, it's not unexpected that costs go up. And sometimes you wonder, well, was it all escalation? Was it all one particular item? It's a number of factors. So I appreciate the fact that you had that all in your back pocket. I knew you'd have the answer. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Matt, Mary Jane, Norv, Dennis?
Just saying, I'm sorry. Interest 2% for 20 years versus interest 2% for six months, what is that there?
The DPH does not allow, well, first of all, the DPH only allows us to put into the project interim costs before the loan starts to pay. The reason we took it out is because we don't anticipate having the interest cost upfront, as I explained with the assessments. We would only be paying interest if people didn't pay their initial bill, so that interest would be tacked on to their bill. It wouldn't be town cost at that time. So it really didn't add to project, to overall project cost.
So this 327 on the original budget, what was that? That's 20 years?
That was the entire interest. That's how it was.
For 20 years?
That was the amount that was originally done for that budget, yes.
But you get 100, you get half that for six months at the same rate? I'm confused.
Well, because of the increased cost of...
Yeah, but it's only six months, and this is 20 years.
Yeah, I didn't do the first one, so.
The numbers just, it doesn't make, I was a little confused.
It's a larger amount, the loan is doubled, because the loan goes from...
Okay, well, I'll forget about that. So the one on the right, though, is the one we're looking at now, anyway?
Correct. So I arbitrarily chose six months, not knowing how long that would be.
So that's when, so that's the, so we are charging them prior to the loan kicking in, the loan kicks in, this is assuming the loan kicks in in six months, at which time they will be billed the 2% on the loan amount, and any excess, the town's going to, basically, they'll have a no-interest loan on any balances outstanding.
It's somewhat accrued interest, that's somewhat an accrued interest number. That's all that DPH will allow as part of the documents, so.
And the max, the max loan is 3.443?
3.443.
Okay.
And again, we think this, we know this is a higher number than the cost that we have in place. The contingency is higher than we'd normally would have.
So you basically have a 10% contingency on top of the highest bid that I've there, which you're not going with anyway.
Right. Good.
Anything else? Based on that question, or what, are there, just to be clear, are there any, or what costs are there that are borne by the town and not by the residents?
Nothing.
Okay.
Except the opportunity cost that Ken mentioned, in terms of the money that we're putting up from.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
That's it.
Okay?
Yep.
I'm all set with questions? Megan, Veronica, Jonathan?
All set.
All good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. At this point, we have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, and we've discussed it. And I think what I'm going to ask is, if there's any further discussion, and if no further discussion, all in favor of the resolution as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you?
My question is...
I missed that when I said discussion, I guess, all right.
She was just getting ready.
Go ahead.
We're not, we're not making a motion to send this to town meeting for next week?
That's my fault. We sent a town meeting based on your approval.
We're approving the resolution.
The Board of Selectmen passed a resolution to set, establish a town meeting contingent upon your approval of additional expenditure.
I have a copy of it, if you'd like to read it.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. I don't want, I don't want us to have to do a repeat. I'm trying to...
You guys have a lot of authority, but you don't have the authority to establish a town meeting.
The resolution that the Board of Selectmen passed is contingent upon your vote.
On us passing this resolution?
Yes.
Yes, I approve.
Okay.
Good question.
No, 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 it is. And I should have prefaced it, literally just by saying, what we're ultimately doing is taking this resolution, moving it to the Board of Selectmen to establish a town meeting. I should have added that, and that would have...
That would have clarified it.
Then it would have eliminated your question.
And the public would have been clearer.
Yes, well, they are now.
Yeah.
And that meeting will be posted tomorrow, so I want to thank the board for pulling your calendars together and extra diagnosis to allow us to get this out in a timeframe where we can get the town meeting approval prior to the DPH. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Very welcome, thank you. We have no other items on the agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
That kind of thing.